To order. We have Donna is missing. So let's appoint Tucker in his first meeting as a alternate for Donna Beinstein. Okay, Tucker?
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, Donna or Diane, we see you.
No, I was just saying, kind of Tucker. I didn't know he was the new alternate.
Oh.
Yeah, no, isn't that cool?
Excellent.
Yes.
Yeah, I swore in, I swore in today.
Okay, good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, we have minutes from the February 7th meeting. And anybody have any comments or corrections?
Yeah, a couple things.
Okay.
First of all, we called the order and then we had a motion, all in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and there was no vote. There weren't voting on anything. Line 18.
Line 18. Yep. Don't know what that is, but it can be dropped.
Yeah, I don't think we needed that. And I'll go to my other one, but tell me, we have some other stuff. 152 is Madigan, application 2129 with an effective date. I think she moved the motion. Or moved, made a motion to approve application, yeah.
Oh, right, right. And there was, there was one other line where there's a typo, line 71. It said Ms. Sparkowski stated the commission could discuss application later.
Discussion, yeah.
Right, just a correction. Any others? Motion to approve them is amended?
I move their approval as amended.
Second.
Second by Diane. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, any abstain? Okay, six, nothing. That carries the minutes are approved as amended. We have no public hearings tonight. And the next order of business is application 2130 of Dorset Crossing LLC. I presume that most of these people that are here are speaking to that application. David, I think your name has been on a lot of things. David?
Yeah. Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dave Ziax. I'm a professional engineer with F.A. Hesketh Associates over in East Granby. And we have been working our way through with staff and DRB to present the site plan application before you folks for lots D and G up at Dorset Crossing. We did receive a unanimous approval from the Inland Wetlands Commission. I think that was back in December. And this evening, I think it was sent over to you, we received the unanimous positive recommendation from DRB. We spent, I think, three meetings with them, including tonight, to work out their comments. And they seemed like they were overall very excited about the project and gave you unanimous recommendation, which should be in your file this evening. What I'd like to do is share very quickly PowerPoint for the site plan. This is going to be called Crown Simsberry Apartments over at Dorset Crossing. It's technically, address is 115 and 130 Castor Bridge Crossing, which is also known as lots D and G on various master plans. Here's an aerial view of Dorset Crossing. It has traffic light down on Route 10. And there's been a medical office building was the first thing was built over here up near the front edge of Route 10 and Dorset Crossing. This is actually called Dorset Crossing. The road was constructed and then this is Castor Bridge Crossing here. And that was built to town standards and accepted by the town council up to where the special housing building was built right here on this lot here that we did a few years ago. These are the apartments that were approved several years ago and they're fully occupied. This is Lot D and Lot G that was known on the subdivision and the master plan that was approved by this commission. This is the master plan, MA sheet MA1, that's in your set that where we superimposed the two buildings this evening into the master plan. There was always two apartment buildings proposed up in this, on these two lots with a total of seven, up to 72 units approved in the master plan.
Did you just, can I just get a question in for a moment? I don't want to slow you down, but that MA1, and you said you superimposed something on something. Did we, do we actually have a copy of the master site plan that was approved some years ago?
Yeah, it's in your, it's in the package at the tail end of the package. We can look at it later. We could look at it right now if you'd like. So while you're, while you're bringing.
Well, as you go along, I'm interested in the changes. That's our responsibility when we look at the site plan. It's a site plan in relation to the master plan that was approved.
Well, looking at the original master plan, which I think is... This is the original master plan, dates back to, I think, 2012. So you can see the two buildings were shown here on lots D and G with a total of up to 72 units. So the proposal before you this evening really is completely consistent with that master plan other than the final site design details, but from a master planning point of view, there was the cul-de-sac was always envisioned at the end of Castor Bridge. We did leave a right-of-way that would go further to the south. This land is, is part of the large piece of land that was sold by Griffin Land a number of years ago. And a lot of that is now occupied with solar panels. But as part of the overall master plan, we left, we left and worked around this right-of-way so that Castor Bridge Crossing could be extended to this land to the south. You know, someday in the future if the development on that property changes from what is now the solar panels to some other, you know, some other kind of either residential or industrial development in the future. So that's consistent with the master plan as well.
This drawing, is that the one that was like seconded in that deck? It's dated December?
No, this, this, yeah, this set, this is actually, let's look over here. This is actually dates back to... Cursor's moving around it, but you can see in the title block, this, this master plan dates back to July 1st, 2013.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, yep. So go jumping back over. This is the beauty of the PowerPoint. We can jump around. Looking at a colored site plan for what we're looking at this evening. You can see again, this lighter color is the portion of Castor Bridge Crossing that needs to be extended and brought up to town standards. You actually approved those construction drawings back a couple of years ago. It involves replacing the culvert underneath Castor Bridge Crossing. This, this sort of shaded area here that I pointed to, that Saxton Brook. It flows generally from the northwest to the southeast and continues on, goes under Route 10 and then goes to the Farmington River. So that's Saxton Brook there. The, the developers and contractors for these two buildings are going to complete the work on Castor Bridge Crossing so that it will be completely, fully brought up to town standards for the approved plans prior to occupancy of these buildings. So that will be built into the construction. One of the issues, oh, you can see here, let's go back here. You can see that there's actually very little outdoor parking associated with, you would think with 72 units of housing. Most of the parking is, is on the ground level, if you want to call it the basement, but it's the ground level of both buildings. For instance, Lot D here, this building will have 30 units. And there's 39 under garage parking spaces and, and then there is 15 spaces in these outside garage units. So really, there's only 13 outside paved parking spaces here. And then the same thing on this side, Lot D, Lot G, there's 42 units there, but there's 55 spaces under the building. And then there's only 29 spaces outside. And to gain access to that underground parking, come around and go down, drive down this driveway here and there'll be, you know, sealed garage doors at the bottom of both buildings here. So you'll gain access to the underground garage there. And of course, there'll be, you know, elevators that go down to the garage and take you up to the, one of the three levels up above where you, where you'd be living. As part of this, this, this parcel next to us here between the special needs housing here and our apartments, this was already assigned to be town open space that's already been dedicated. And then to continue the corridor along Saxton Brook, we're setting aside this area between the edge of our development and our property line, which is the yellow line here. This will all be conservation area. So we have a continuous corridor along Saxton Brook with no development. Continue on. One of the issues that popped up with staff was the concern, we had five parking spaces over here on the cul-de-sac, even though they're on our property. This is sort of a temporary cul-de-sac until the road gets extended, however long that takes. So there will be an easement dedicated over, you know, the, the circle that encompasses the turnaround for the cul-de-sac. And that easement will be granted to the town. So this is essentially a public turnaround at this location and Public Works needs to use it as a turnaround area for snow plowing and maintenance and the like. And they were generally concerned about us putting parking spaces here, even though they're technically on our, our land that would meet the zoning requirements. So they're working with staff back and forth. We've managed to take those five spaces off the cul-de-sac and incorporate them into the design of this parking area here. And I think you have an email from today from Tom Roy, your Director of Public Works, who's also your town engineer now with the retirement of Jeff Shea, indicating that he's satisfied that we've met that concern. And, you know, as part of the easement document that we'll sign, we'll work out the, the maintenance for, you know, we want to put a landscaped island here in the center of the cul-de-sac to soften the asphalt area. And then the sidewalks that go around will be, you know, it will be our obligation to take care of the sidewalks, take care of the landscaping and, and the circle around here. And that'll be documented in the easement document that will work out with staff, you know, as we move forward with the plans.
David, did you address the turning radius there too? Because that was in the letter with Tom?
Yeah, yes, I provided him with turning radii for the, principally the fire truck to be able to turn around here and here. And he's satisfied with that. And I guess Fire Marshal was also satisfied. So I think we're all set with that. Very quickly, this is the landscaping plan, which is very extensive as part of the plan. We worked that out with DRB and incorporated their comments. Their big concern, both Wetlands and DRB, was to incorporate as many native plants as we, we could into the, into the layout and certainly avoid any type of listed invasive landscaping plants on either lot. And we were successful in doing that. Here's a blow up. This is just a blow up of the proposed foundation plants, plantings that would go around each building. As part of the building, each unit has either a deck or an at-ground patio for each, and you'll see the architecture in a, in a moment how that looks. And then we have, you know, emergency access on both ends of the building. And then it's sort of a main entrance corridor that goes like here through Building D and then over here through Building G. There's a main access both in, both ends for tenants. There'll be secured, those will be secured doors that you'll need pass keys in order to get in and out of the building, except in the back here where the visitors can enter into a, you know, a common, you know, a common area where you can gain access to the elevators, things of that, of that sort. Basically, we have a full pedestrian walkway system which ties into the walkway. The public walkway is along Castor Bridge here on sort of the easterly side. The sidewalk ends right around this area. Right now, we're going to be extending that up and around the cul-de-sac and then tie it into, you know, the site access. So anybody who wants to go for a nice long walk along Castor Bridge and then down Dorset Crossing can easily gain access there for, for the public. Continuing on. These are all the details for the planting plans. If you've had an opportunity to review those, all the sizes and quantities and species. Then we have a full grading plan, which at this scale looks like a giant bowl of spaghetti, but it's been reviewed by staff, found to be good. We have, as part of the regulations, incorporated a full erosion control plan with a narrative built in for erosion control during construction. Then we have our utility plan. What we're doing will be extending water, electric, communications and gas down Castor Bridge to serve both these buildings. As it turns out, for sanitary sewer, there is a fairly large interceptor, Sanitaries Town Interceptor Sewer, which comes in and does these little jogs across the property. That was installed probably, might be 30 years ago now. We'll be connecting directly into that, working with WPCA. And we've stayed out of that corridor. Actually, we'll be clearing, right now, this is pretty heavily overgrown through here. So as part of our project, we'll be clearing these out and this will be pretty much all a lawn area now for easy access. And none of our structural elements is in that easement. That was a, you know, requirement from WPCA. We have a couple of small drainage structures and a piece of walkway, but we have no structures within the right-of-way for the sewer. As part of our drainage plan, we worked that out with staff and the Inland Wetlands Commission, and we meet all of the criteria for the town's design. And we easily meet the DEP's water quality requirements for discharge of the stormwater. So we've got a good design there. Mentioned the extensive landscaping. And we have resolved, as we said, the concerns about the parking on the cul-de-sac. We've resolved the issues, early issues that the Fire Marshal had. The applicant is proposing to upgrade all of the fire life safety systems in the building up to NFPA 13, which I understand is a very strict requirement. And Fire Marshal requested that and the, and the applicants have agreed to it, which relieves a lot of stress and concerns about access to the buildings and everything when you're up at that level because the building is essentially completely sprinkled, all aspects of it. Plus, there's lots of other safety issues incorporated with alarm systems and stand pipes and things of that nature that I'm not an expert in, but I've been told that all that's been added. It will be fully reviewed, obviously, by the fire department and by your building department. When the construction drawings are presented for building permit, that'll all be reviewed again to ensure, you know, full compliance. There are just a couple of minor, we did do a full response to staff. There's still a couple of minor town engineering comments that you typically find with the site plan review. And I've talked to Tom Roy about those. Those are minor. We will address those on the final set of plans for signature. And to my knowledge, there's really no other outstanding planning department comments. But Laura can speak to that. What I'd like to do is turn over the presentation to Michael Kinsley, who is the architect. He's fresh from his presentation to DRB this evening. What I can show you here is very quickly, as he starts, this is a sort of a bird's eye view, an aerial view of what the site will look like. Again, you can see coming in, this would be the cul-de-sac here, access around the back for the building over on D, access to the left for the building on G. And you can see where the access to the underground parking is located. Here, you can't really see it on those buildings on the backside. And again, we're going to leave that right-of-way here for future road. We've designed our buildings to live with that if necessary in the future. And then pretty much everything around the south side of the building and everything is just a vegetated slope that leads up to where you can sort of see up here where the gray is, where the solar panels are located. But this whole rear portion of the site will be vegetated behind the buildings. Michael, did you want to come in?
Yep, I'm here. Hello, everyone.
The next slide I had there is the site elevation you could talk about.
Sure. While we, when we were at the, going through the design review board meetings, we actually had three meetings with them. This was the, today's was the last meeting in which they gave us approval. We worked out several items with them relative to the siding, the, the base of the buildings, which were incorporating some of the local redstone look and also colors of the buildings. We met with approval on all of those items. The major feature of the building is, of, as you can tell, are the broad decks in the building, which really is a response to market conditions and so forth. It's a highly desirable feature. And it, it, we've, we've incorporated spaces within the units that kind of helped us to reduce some of the common spaces, help the buildings to fit a little better on site. So this is, this is generally the end result. The, some of the colors aren't exactly right on here, but, but yeah, that, that's the basic color scheme, kind of limiting it to three basic colors with white trim. So we think we've addressed all those comments and we look forward to, look forward to building this one.
Michael, maybe you could just speak to very quickly the, the, the floors. I mean, here's the garage floor down below, but then about the units.
Yep, the, it's a fairly straightforward plan with the garage level packed with parking for convenience of the residents, elevators, of course, through all floors and the, and the garage. And we also are incorporating trashing, trash chute that drops, allows residents to drop off trash on their floors, collects at the lower level. And then we can, with either two or three yard sized dumpsters, they'll be rolled out so that they can be dropped off into the trash enclosure that's on site. Each building will have its own trash enclosure so that the contract hauler can actually just pull right up, dump the trash out and then, and the recycling and then, and then go on. And then it'll just, that's just cycle or repeat. We'll just take the empties back into the building and then bring in, bring out the, the trash as it's, as it's collected. And that may be, you know, a couple of times per week that we'd have to do that. The, the units are pretty standard, double-loaded corridor. Some of the, one of the earlier plans we had investigated were, was to make a two-story townhome in combination with these flats, but the market just did not bear that out. Didn't, didn't work for the marketplace. And, and this was a, a more economical plan for us and it addressed the, the needs of the housing for that community. And as David pointed out, where we have grade up to the building, up to the floor elevation, we're using patios, exterior patios for all of those units. And as the grade drops off, we, we've transferred, we've changed those into decks. So everybody has exterior availability for exterior recreation and, and sitting around and enjoying their time off.
And just very quickly, because I just got these, well, here's, here's the straightforward elevation drawings, you know, that, that are just two dimensions, just to give the commission a view of that. But Jack Brant, who's online, one of the developers, he sent me over some very quick interior, I guess, computer-generated interior decor, things. Probably Michael was involved in this, just to give the commission an opportunity to see, like here, they're pretty interesting, actually. You can see, one of the, one of the real nice things about this, which is probably going to drive me to want to get one of these apartments, is the, these facing out onto the deck is, this is literally an all glass wall looking out onto the deck. And then there's a door that's off the photo here that allows you onto the deck. That's, that's pretty interesting. I don't think I've seen that permits around here. And again, here's just some, some visual ideas of what, of what, of what the interior of these buildings or these apartments are going to look like very quickly without spending too much time on that. But again, you can see the outdoor deck and all that glass, which I thought was pretty cool. And then this gives you another view of the, you know, the large living area, looking out from your kitchen. But that just gives the commission a feel for type of units that we're, we're talking about here. And unless Michael has something else to add, I, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission might have.
Thank you. Anybody have questions?
I have one.
Who's that?
Go right ahead, Tucker.
Tucker? Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm wondering what, what accommodations, if any, have been thought about for, to, to give to us cyclists? Do you guys have any plans for some bike racks or a bike lane on your Castor Bridge Crossing bridge there?
Michael or one of our applicants does, about the interior for bicycle access?
Yeah, we have.
Grant, we are proposing to include some bike storage spaces in the garage area as well as, as well as additional storage in the space.
And this is the other developer, Tom LaSalle. Now that I've understood how electric bikes work, I'm a big bicyclist, so yes, we will.
That's good. That'll help people, without needing a vehicle, it'll help them patronize some of the local businesses there, right on that road. Canes that are pretty legacy and important to the town that I'm sure would appreciate the extra business.
Right, I'm a, I'm a big fan of electric bicycles. They make the world flat.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
A quick question. And I'm just curious, in the drawing, there are still vehicle spaces on that cul-de-sac? Are those being eliminated?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, we just didn't have time to take those out. This is, let me, let me, this is what it's going to look like. There'll be no spaces around the cul-de-sac. We've managed to blend them into the, the layout of our site.
Okay. I figured as much. I just wanted to verify. Thanks.
You know, that's okay. Yeah, actually, I was, we were hoping to get some time to fix the rendering, but we ran out of time.
I have a question regarding your, your design plans you showed. You had just, the apartments that you showed were all two bedrooms. Are you having any one-bedroom or three-bedroom apartments?
Well, the units actually are two-bedroom and den and/or three bedrooms. They can function as a three-bedroom as necessary, but given the requirements for home office work, we opted to include a den that has a multi-use purpose, that being a bedroom, den, workspace, family room, et cetera. We've done that in a lot of projects. I should add also, this is a very upscale building, nine-foot ceilings, hardwood floors, underground parking. Some cases, we have two levels of underground parking. So it's, we think a very special product that will fit well within the community. We don't think there are many projects like this in the community. I think it's a great location as well with all the various landscape opportunities as well that will be expanded for outdoor space. that will be expanded for outdoor spaces and outdoor amenities also. So we think it's a really a class A facility that will be well supported by the community. The market for these types of developments, for these larger developments is typically very highly occupied. The case at Simsbury, it's in the Simsbury market area, it's an area of ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. In one of the more recent surveys, we looked at the adjacent building that was essentially fully occupied. So we believe this will provide a niche in the marketplace that will be well received by both senior housing residents as well as professionals, as well as some families. So it will meet the needs with the different types of residents as well.
Mr. Chairman, did you receive comments? Tom Roy had some comments about the site plan not being stamped, the WPCA.
I'm afraid you're out of order.
Why?
This is not public. You're not, you're not seated.
So I thought I could speak but not vote?
No, you can't speak. Sorry, it's the town attorney's interpretation. But I do have the, I do have some questions. Anybody else have some questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a couple for clarifications. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm understanding this deal with the garages. Are a hundred percent of the garage spaces under the building? There's no out, there's no garages out except for under the footprint of the building? Is that an accurate, accurate understanding?
No, the, some of, some of the parking is, is in the garages under the building. There's, there's at least one space per unit underneath the buildings. And then on building D in particular, there's an opportunity for some additional garage parking. And then the remainder is, is outdoor parking. The master plan calls for one, a minimum of one and a half spaces per apartment. And this is, this is two, just around two spaces.
Yeah, I, I got, I'm kind of getting that message. What I'm still not clear on is the garage parking. When you say you have in the garage parking, is that all underneath the buildings or not?
Yes.
Okay.
And in addition to that, we have some surface garages.
Right, over here on D. Right, yeah.
Oh, so the garage parking is not all under the building. There's some above grade garages over on the northwest.
On the D side, yeah.
The intention, the intention of those are just additional garages for people who want them.
Right, okay. And then I wasn't sure what, what the point was made earlier about, I don't, I don't know if it's a change or just sort of the way it was expressed. There were two story units and there were one story units. And now, do I understand all the units are one story?
Yes.
Okay.
We realize, initially, we started out with townhouses and we realized that they really weren't townhouses because of the elevations of the site, and it made more sense to go to flats with balconies.
So what, what was in the master plan? The master plan was for two story units?
No. No, they were for three story garden style apartments similar to, was it the point next door, I think it's called?
Well, no, the building was three stories, but the units were two story units and one story units.
That was, that, yeah, but that was, that was the, our original design that we were thinking about doing. The, the buildings were, were three story units regardless.
If the, if the build, if the site was flatter, we would have done that because we, we liked the concept. But as we got into it with the, the site, it just didn't work.
Well, I, what I'm trying to close in on is, is that a change from the master site plan or not?
No, no.
The site plan we're looking at is the same from that standpoint as the master site plan that was approved several years ago. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, okay. Good.
Any other comments?
Is there any elevations of the garage? The, the detached garage there?
Uh, Michael, the intent is what, to build those out of the same materials?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Right, so the answer is no.
No, we don't, don't have any for this presentation. I, we, we actually did for the previous one, but I don't, I don't have, we don't have them on, on this particular one. But no, we don't have any for this.
There will be cementitious siding with similar, you know, they'll, they'll fit in. We need them to fit in.
Right, they'll, 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 they'll support the same finishes as the majority of the building finishes that are already on there, which is the lap siding and, and cementitious fiber cement panels.
Okay, and to go to, back to Tucker's question, so there, there will be bicycle storage in, under, under garages? Under the building garages? Or take your bike up here?
Yes, there will be.
And what is the length of these buildings compared to the point? Are they all longer?
Yeah, well, here's, here's a typical point build. I think they're all the same size.
Well, you're, you're a little longer, and what I'm, I'm surprised that is that.
No, 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 I mean, the, the points buildings are all the same size. I'm sorry, yeah. So our building is, I don't know, maybe one and a half, D is maybe one and a half times the size. And G, I said, I suppose you could argue is close to twice the size, twice the length. They're about the same width.
No, I'm surprised that designer you didn't question any, you know, some kind of articulation to the, to the, to the frontage.
Yeah, no, they, like I said, we worked with them for three meetings and they seemed very satisfied with this design tonight.
I, I, I think they're, they understood that the decks being a major part of the, the building provided that sort of articulation that they were looking for. And we also modified the roof elevations across as well. So a little more prominent in the elevations, but, but there's, that provided them with enough articulation that they were satisfied.
All right, because I was just looking at the end view and it was, looked pretty straight shot. But that's, I guess, because all of the decks come out the same distance.
Okay, Dan, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I asked mine before. Thank you.
Diane, you okay?
Um, yeah, I, I, yeah, I, well, okay, I do have one other question. It's, I'm just curious, do you know what school district this falls under? Is this squadron line or tariff field? Do you know? And do you anticipate how many additional children would be adding to the school rolls? I mean, it's kind of hard to guess without having actually gotten enrollment, but do you have any kind of a estimation?
Well, actually, we think this is going to be more of an empty nester product.
Yeah. Okay, do you know what school district they, they belong to?
I do not.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, it obviously would be the same as, with the point is, they have a few students there, from what I understand.
Okay, yeah, no other questions, thank you.
Okay, I have some questions. There was a memo in our, in our Dropbox that was written by Tom Roy on March first. And the email that you referred to today, David, was referring to the cul-de-sac and the removal of those parking spaces that we see in this drawing here, in this picture. There are a couple of others in that memo. Item number four, which I think had something to do with the drainage.
Yeah, he and I spoke about those few remaining items and I think we've agreed that they're, you know, just tip, typical little touchups to be done as before the, the final plans are signed.
Let me look at what it said. It says, the pound report. It's something about the, the drainage labeling in the culvert.
Yeah, there's like, there's like two typos in that report where, like the slope of the pipe or whatever doesn't match the final design type of thing, you know, typo.
Okay, and then seven and eight in that list are this cul-de-sac and and the fire access to that, or the fire access through that. And I think that Tom believes has been resolved. Then there were in a list of new things in that memo, item number six, which was maintaining separation between water and sanitary services.
Yep.
That hadn't been adequately addressed.
Yeah, that's a, that's another one of those, let me go right up here, I'll show you exactly where it is. Something that's going to be very easily resolved, but I'll show you where it is. Right over here, we have a yard drain that is closer than 10 feet to the sanitary lateral coming out of the building. So we've just got to move that yard drain over a little bit. That satisfies that comment.
Okay, so it's separating the sanitary drain from the.
The storm drain.
Storm drain, okay.
Right.
I was, I was reading that as, as the water supply.
Yeah, they were talking about the water supply, but then he realized that it really wasn't. It's, it's a storm drain, so.
Okay, and 10. And access to the culvert for maintenance purposes. And 13 is then, again, conduit. Okay, so Tom is, Tom is happy with those things and, and his comment in that memo was that that would, they'd have to be satisfied before he would sign off on a CO.
Oh, absolutely, not even CO, before we can record the plans, you know, so before your signature. So those few, those few staff comments are, have to be worked out to their satisfaction. And, and then, you know, then you have an opportunity to sign the plans before, before they can be filed.
Okay.
The big, the big enchilada, Mr. Chairman, was, was the cul-de-sac issue and just the access around there. And it took a while to get, to get that resolved.
Good, well, that's important that we get that done. It's a big building, a couple of big, of big buildings.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do we have any comments from the commissioners, any other comments? Are we ready to make a motion for approval of this application?
I did not see a recommended motion, was there one?
I didn't either.
Well, I, I think that, I found that troubling because I think the conditions here need to be fairly explicit. And I'm not sure what to say about engineering issues. You know, what we have is, is Tom Roy's indication that he has concerns that need to be fixed. And yet we get an oral message through the applicant that Tom said it's okay, go ahead.
Now, Tom, Tom, Tom gave a written email approving the.
Every one of those issues?
Approving the issues except the ones that I just brought up, which were, and those are, those are, I believe, three items that have to do with the way it gets constructed. And they aren't really major issues.
No, I mean, it's, it's very, it's very common for the.
I'm not an engineer, I can't tell the major issues from the minors. I have to depend on the engineers.
Yeah, I, I can assure you that they are minor and, you know, historically, whatever, however you want to put it, site plans are typically approved with a few minor issues left over between the applicant and staff. It, you know, they, the plans have to be perfected to address any, any remaining comments either from the planning department or from this engineering department before any of the final plans can be issued and signed by your chairman. So I'm, you know, I think we're, I think we're there from that, from that point of view.
Kevin?
Yeah, I would just make the motion that, you know, that it's subject to, to satisfactory resolution of the town engineer's concerns or something.
In, in memo, in the memo dated March first. It was in the Dropbox.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I read it, but, because that's not normally something that we would deal with anyhow.
Right.
Yeah, it's normally resolved somehow before it gets here.
Well, we've had several these recently where we just let them go, you know, let them resolve it behind the scenes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable having gone through them specifically here tonight. I think that none of them were, seven and eight were the, were the items that were resolved today between Tom and the applicant. The other, the other items were the location of the access to the end of the culvert and so forth.
Yeah, I think one was about just stamping drawings. So I'd be fine with, with approving it as Kevin described.
All right, well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve application 2130 of Dorset Crossing LLC applicant. Subject to the satisfactory resolution of the issues of the town engineer in his memo dated March first, 2022. And Laura, what is the normal other paragraph we always put in that is subject to minor changes by the, the staff?
Approved by staff in writing.
In writing prior to being implemented in the field. And I would also add a, a pre-construction meeting.
Okay.
On site for staff to attend.
We actually have, we actually have that in the notes on the plans too, Laura, so that's, it'll be covered, it'll be covered twice to remind everybody.
All right, so we'll do those three issues in the, in the memo, in the, in the motion.
Here, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Diane. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, Carrie, six, nothing, thank you.
Thanks very much, folks. Bye bye now.
Hey, thank you all.
Okay, the next item of business is this is Rogers, I believe. With application 22-06 of Judy Rogers for a site plan amendment for a accessory dwelling unit in her property. Judy, you want to tell us about it?
Hi, my husband will tell you.
Can, can you hear it, it's okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
I'm, I'm her emotional support husband, when she realized that she had to talk on the Zoom.
I started to get nervous.
She started to get nervous. So I'm, I'm just celebrating my 25th year teaching in the town. And we moved into Simsbury the same year I started teaching. We built this house 1998 on one Rebecca Lane. We raised two wonderful children. My daughter is diagnosed with mosaic Down syndrome. She's an autism. She's 22 now, and we're looking at options for her to gain independence. We looked around at some apartment complexes, Owen Murphy and others, and decided that the thing that was most viable for us was to convert our great room into an efficiency style apartment with a loft bed, kitchenette, bathroom.
And the room already has.
It's all, it's all on the same floor, it's on the same footprint as the, as the house as it currently stands.
And the room already has a, a side entrance.
The room has it, yes, its own side entrance. It has a full basement for the, the plumbing. We've spoken to a couple of contractors and we're going with Jim Barrett Builders. He's gone ahead and pulled the permit, building permits. And we're here to, to put. put forward our our request to make this happen for our daughter and for our family.
Okay, Steph, does this meet all of the regulations of our zone?
It does meet all of the regulations for zoning. They will be living there. The only other concern that I didn't see actually written out, but I assume that all the utilities will be shared.
Yes.
There is no separation on utilities.
Yeah.
If you would like, we can go through each and every one of them, Mr. Chair, or if you prefer.
Sure, that wouldn't hurt. We've got time.
Okay, so A, the definitive owner of record or beneficiary must live in the estate, must reside in either the accessory dwelling unit, which is the case. B, the area devoted to the accessory dwelling shall not exceed 600 square feet or 25%. The main structure is a little bit over 1,400 square feet, if I remember correctly. So it definitely meets that requirement. It shall not have separate utilities from the dwelling, which we already decided. There's only one accessory dwelling unit on this lot, and that will be the one that you will be creating. The primary dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit shall comply with building health and preventative codes. They're pulling their building permits and their zoning permits as we speak. Any second entrances incorporated into the principal residence shall reflect the architectural style of a single family home, which is the case. There is no additional driveway or curb cut, and the driveway does allow for at least one off-street parking spot, although I don't consider that. So it does meet all the requirements as of right.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
I think you did a good job on the application and Judy didn't need him at all.
She rarely does.
Well, she was correcting you throughout the whole thing anyhow.
That's right.
Okay, any other comments? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move. I can find the number though.
2206.
2206.
I remove application 2206 of Judith Rogers for an accessory dwelling unit at One Rebecca Lane. Laura, additions?
Any conditions we should put on it, Lord?
An administrative zoning permit.
Is required.
It's subject to administrative zoning.
Your second?
I'll second it.
Second by Anne. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Stained. Carrie, six, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck, that's right.
Okay.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. General Commission Business. We have appointment to the Design Review Board. We got some, I got an email from Elaine Lang, who's the nominating chairman for the Democratic Town Committee. I forwarded that to everyone today. Elaine made the comment to me when I called her about it, that they look for people who have design skill evidence, not necessarily formal training. And right now they have Elaine and the Chair Steve, neither one of whom are architects or design people. So they feel that she will do a good job. This is Kamla.
I don't think there was ever any objection one way necessarily. It was just more, we didn't know who she was. So it was nice that she provided the detail on her.
And now, you know, I looked her up and I got I think it's four or five stories in the newspaper.
I'm just saying, if she were to bring us some baked goods, it wouldn't hurt. Throw it out there. But no.
She's got quite a bit of newspaper coverage on her store coming up.
Yeah.
And we have a motion to approve Kamla?
Well, wait a second. I wanted to make another comment that
Yes.
While I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this appointment, but I don't, I'm not sure who writes these sort of things about the various boards and commissions, but the Design Review Board, the homepage for the Design Review Board in describing for the public what we're looking for in terms of appointments to that board, it says that membership, the board consists of, it doesn't say these are targets. It says the board consists of and benefits from a membership with backgrounds and expertise in the fields of architecture, site planning, landscape architecture, historic preservation, professional engineering, and graphic design. Now, contrary to that, if you look at what's written at the where the zoning commission commissioners are described, you know, if you're a good person and people like you, you can be on the zoning commission. But on the Design Review Board, somebody wrote in all this very specific background stuff. And my thought and suggestion is that whoever wrote it should moderate it a little or lift it out of there or something because I'm, as I said, I'm going to support this, you know, nominee, but I don't see in the material that Elaine furnished, a description that's consistent with what's, you know, in the on the homepage.
We have, we have had some degree of difficulty in getting people to serve in these commissions. And I think they've they've gone out of their way to try to find people who will be contributing in a valuable way. And maybe we should rewrite that draft on.
Because if I'm a member of the public and I'm going to apply for something and they tell me I'm going to have to go meet with the Design Review Board three times, like folks over here earlier, I'm thinking, you know, I'm going to have to get an attorney or an architect or somebody to represent me if I'm facing a bunch of architects and engineers. But you know, it sounds like we know that's not who's over there. And so, yeah, so we're sort of overstating what's what's there. I mean, this is aspirational in terms of, you know, what we'd like to have there, but it's not what's there.
Right.
Anyway.
I'll agree with Bruce on that. I do think that the Design Review Board is intended to be a board of experts. It is technical, not, you know, we can be just so average citizens on zoning. But that's because you have a Design Review Board of experts that are reviewing.
For sure.
Oh, I wouldn't weaken the the definition of what they're supposed to be. I would think that is, and it should be our aspiration, is to find people that have those technical skills so that we have a landscape architect looking at our plans and
Yeah.
at least a couple of architects. Historic preservation fits into that. So I do think that is, it should be the goal.
Okay, there's no problem with it being the goal. The problem is trying to implement.
Except that's not what it says. It says
I know.
The board consists of.
We'll edit it, bring it back to the commission. How's that? All right, can we have a motion to approve Kamla, please?
I will make a motion to approve Kamla Vorzane? I'm probably pronouncing her name wrong. I'm going to apologize upfront as a member of the Design Review Board.
With a term from 2000?
With the term, sorry, with the two, with the do not know the term, sorry.
December 6, 2021 to December 6, 2021.
Twenty-three?
Five.
Twenty-five?
Four-year, four-year term.
That is a long term. Okay, so for a four-year term, December 6th, 21 to 25.
Your second?
Second it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained. Okay, she carries six, nothing. Kamla is appointed. Okay. We, I think we need to schedule another workshop for the for the sign regs. Anybody have any time that they'd like to have us do that?
I think that, you know, the in-between Mondays works.
I agree.
Monday? So we want to do it for next week? Okay, so let's schedule it for, what would it be, the 14th?
Dave, can it wait till they get a new town planner in?
No, I think we should move along.
Yeah, no, let's, let's
The only thing with the 14th, Mr. Chair, is I know there's also a board of selectmen meeting that night, so I just have to make sure we have a television channel available for us for broadcasting purposes.
Okay, so you look into that and we'll send a notice out if we can do that. And if we can't, maybe we'll do the the fourth week. Okay?
And do we need to broadcast the workshop?
Meeting.
If it's a meeting, sufficient.
Broadcast. I don't. Because when we used to meet up in the Board of Ed office, we did, or the planning office, we didn't always have those.
Yeah.
Videoed.
Are we going to go back to meeting in person?
That's a good question.
That was my question.
That's, I think when the town is fully open, I think we'll be
The town is fully open.
Or fully open here.
So do we have a channel to use on our regular meeting nights? Well, maybe Laura could find that out.
Yeah.
If it's remote, we definitely have to broadcast. It's one of the requirements for being able to do Zoom meetings. I don't know if you were intending on going back in person.
Yeah, I want to get to meeting. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I think we do better in the interaction with the applicants and the public is better in person.
I agree too. So let's, let's see as soon as we can get back to to in-person meetings.
Are masks still required indoors in town hall?
No.
Back off too?
No.
They lifted it.
It's my choice. Right.
No, and the problem with that is it's very hard for people to hear you and understand you. Especially in a Zoom meeting, but even
It's not as much fun. Yeah, in person.
Try trying a case in court like that.
So the next meeting in two weeks will be in person?
We will try to schedule a meeting in person.
And the workshop?
You know, in the workshop, if if everything is okay, we can check tomorrow and see what the status is in town hall. But if we can have a room and meet, let's do it.
But the earlier comment raises in my mind is, I'm just interested, Dave, is there some sort of an update to be had on what's going on with a leader for the planning department?
No. I, I know what's going on and it's progressing. So that's all I can say. You can't we can't say until it's done. But it's, it's getting close.
Well, we have so many things we need to get on that that weeks and months are going by. We haven't done anything on the marijuana business. We have no strategy for discussion or decision making. And that's going to be on us. Well, anyway.
We'll, we'll be
Because we should just need to continue to make progress. We got
Well, we've had multiple occasions where we've talked about the notion of doing something to look into or facilitate the possibility of some community development and tariff fill, some economic development. We're nowhere on that. And it's not on the horizon. So you know, we could all probably, you know, throw up a couple of things here that we'd like to see us working on, but.
And that church in Tariffill, which is zoned in a particular way. And it's been sitting there vacant for five years. Such potential.
Okay. Well, all I can say is it's progressing. I think we'll have somebody reasonably soon.
Okay, we had enough fun?
We had enough fun.
All right, motion to adjourn.
You kind women are on here. We got to get going.
Do we hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good night.